Uh, what's over there? Public comment. Um. Brad, this is your.
Yes.
Uh. Please, I apologize for any missed conversation, but um. So leave the yeah, with yeah, do you have anything that which was speed? Forward. If these means a microphone somewhere. Things we got from what? Okay, the rest of the line, please. And. Good evening.
I'm sorry, I, I can't, I can't hear very well, guys. Um. I'm wondering if I could, uh. I might, if you can hear me okay. I could possibly call Gene on my, on my cellphone and I could just put it on mute on mine. Unless there's some kind of audio issue on your end. Can you guys hear me okay?
Pretty fine.
Yeah, I have, I have my sound all the way up. And I can, I can barely just hear, hear you guys.
All right, maybe, maybe we need to do.
See, I, I can hear, I can hear you good there, Gene.
My microphone. Did you hear that? You hear now?
Yeah, I, I can hear Kelsey a little bit, but it seems the farther we go down there, I have a hard time hearing.
She's gonna come up to the closer mic and see if that works. Did you hear that?
I'm sorry, what's that, what was that, Kelsey?
We're gonna set up the phone so that you can hear, so just give us a minute.
Okay.
Steve, are you calling me or be calling him?
I'll, I'll call you, Gene.
All right. Okay.
Okay, Steve, can you hear me?
Yup.
Okay.
I'm gonna put the phone next to the, the young lady who's speaking.
Good evening. Before I put their memory on, how does it end to you? I'll come back. Very broadly, that's how I said. And something about this. Today, summer rose active instruction is third at twenty nine thirty nine, well, three, including twice a position. With concrete work. While the reality of a comment of the public on five thirty thirty seven, it is well indeed. Under the M P three six. Ten point one and six seventy two, when the structure has turned under detective first classified. And. Contradictory permit. The current must. Is that? Option must be set. And the violations of this station stop working. This must, um, be just the immediate. By any chance, they are adjacent to the land movement. Multiple efficiency beliefs, emissions and misclassification have allowed a large agricultural operation to inform the entire division from the civil zone. Down on easy pieces and on busy. What your records, what your own records show, it's been on office for twenty twenty five, the planning mission is provided through R C K and Chanel. Take. And this project is for egg laying chicken. But the building permits for more plans to experiment animal calculations and the absence of those statements all skies to this operation. Egg writers were in the north store, past room, and most of the wanting. But fans that get torn. Acknowledge staying on it. In fact, it pays was related into the test as a culture. This is start with Q M O. They've invalidated the firm. This hall reputation showing twenty seven dash three zero seven, twenty seven dash four zero six, twenty seven dash twelve. Who's labeled as accessory structure, but the barn is their primary export for meat. This by cast mandatory dealing. This day is just out now, reaching. Uh, three oh two and three oh five. A twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty square foot still be found in part and result. Wave on the front is using incomplete and. Contradictory information. No environment is intact, so that is for on five. Required to take threat band, three notes, town and wild health. For door, sleep, discipline, affect. No traffic, inspect, study. Down on form seven. Our traffic and rusted, flying curve impacts school buses and emergency response. No, the normative certification. The planning minutes say that the applicant will have it. But no plan ever submitted. No C E C, C A F O or N P D has determination. Third count and a newer quality for term, C A F O threshold. Yet no analysis exists. Today. Today's instruction will be able to keep media viability. Work appears to be proceeded under this classified and incomplete permit. Under M T three sixteen dash. The four one, it's an instruction to turn in a violation from zoning for salmon, the town to have left out. Investigate immediately initially stop work for them. The violation of some seventy. Allowing work to continue and exposing towns its liability for knowledge, preventing instruction and her respect for the food. The applicant is connected on the agency, fire on the start of the right side of the cabinet. It stands in several town and a lot of classes, dating wild life, better school now. Ignoring another such pathing directly. With this knowledge, the applicant's father, Brian, for maker constructed apparently. In twenty two, why this new loan gives no electricity. If there's a five, no problem with this one, which like we find, no appearance of account recognition. And questionable with permitting for another township. Establishing the cabin of bypassing proper review. Tonight, I formally request. Immediate stop work for empty pieces. It came about one and seventeen required this when work occurs under a detective permit. The section of locations and permits affirm at twenty five, there is a. Due to misclassification, misclassification and missing mandatory disease. Then for his founder, when the ground three D, environmental staff and wetland. And referral to the duty of PS D. The place of speed A S O, long water and wetland violation. You cannot allow this construction to continue on your own, having your own permit. The use of this classified. Then it's very easy for by town. Public safety concerns are ignored and as of today, construction is occurring despite unresolved opposition. Tonight, you are on notice. Every time that I have made from your policy, some of your orders, your minutes and your permits, that's way off. I ask you to please, because it was a reading.
I'll just say that, um, that, yeah, the, the woman making all that comment did come to board commissioners meeting and did it. And making all of our concerns between board commissioners, which we address fully at that meeting and will continue to address their bar on your issue.
Thank you very much. You down here for this, people, for this calendar or are at all, do you agree with me? Very good, thank you. Moving on to uh, people of the minutes, we have minutes from September three, the project is so. Um. We have. Go for them for.
They, because of all absenteeism and the change of guard of the planning commission members, we don't, so I'm gonna be okay with, um, the people that were here. Who would instead of completely.
Okay, very good. So, um, those people that are sending that, you never feel right now, uh, all those in favor of the. All very good. Next we have is the October six minutes. Pretty fantastic, seeing you have the same issues.
We, we do, yeah, thank you.
All those in favor of, of bringing the not favor six minutes and assuming there are no objectives of correction. That's worth it. Saying then, all those in favor?
I don't think we have a choice. I mean, based on the absentee law, as we did changes of board numbers, see our president. It's, we have to, we have to express with therapy.
Yeah. And what I need first and second, you guys want to say?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I'm just gonna go ahead and say first and second vote. There's only, how many people weren't there? It's October. Was anyone else here in October that are still on the board?
Uh, Kilda wrote a bar, it's third and. We're gonna pull over. Okay, all right, so go back to ten people. When the first one, you know, you say September. Wonder, all, all the gracious, I would, you know, when people that. I'll be. Also. Only thing that. That the board needs me. I would hear, I'm not sure whether. Very enough. Oh. Richard works, okay. Also. All those in favor? It's uh, it's a long time, very much. Yeah. All righty, um, yeah, we're in town comments for that's, um. Going on to. So we'll just actually have three important votes then. Lunch.
Uh, good evening. Um, I will add, the board is okay. You can switch the word. Uh, which to the, uh, segment for decap or. To be able to push her to that. Works okay.
Well, we don't have a problem, we're gonna be following the seat to the.
All right, I mean.
Okay.
Sorry to mess you up now.
That's the way it comes.
I know how it is.
Okay.
All right, please, uh. What for you is a sketch plan of, uh, human capital on land safety. That I call a master plan. The site is, it's located, um, up on seven point four. I can. That's the ultimate. Um, that's where they're getting shot located, uh, that's bothering to the. Get the board. The last side of the plan, it's a shell. Um, essentially they're outgrown their job and it's grown. Too many groups playing throughout so much. Stuff to move around the fishing, uh, in their process. Uh, so we were in front of the board, uh, planning commission and board probably a year ago now, a little over here. Uh, for phase one. Uh, phase one is firm under construction, uh, which is essentially a connection of live leg. Really, their visiting facility allows us to do whatever they trust. Fairly. Very loose, then on the user's back without. That's what it's talking along with the small homework thing. Um, that that all permitted, uh, basically. Uh, what we have in front of you here is, uh, master plan with two. Phase two, then it's meant to be three. Uh. Phase two is most likely what will become English next, uh, for land development. And it's here to follow, uh.
I mean, guys, you know, three thousand years now. Uh, then it'll be.
Uh, phase three, uh, that they are in the process. So, phase two is essentially going to be a large gravel laid out there. Off they open, um, zone area for them to, to replace. The multiple acres, and they say it's done. Uh, corruption and maneuver around, kind of a yard really, uh. That we don't have to move yet. Uh, it'll be tent in the gates, uh, going to the gritty property, uh, out to the gritty roadway, uh. Then through the wall of the ice setting. Access. You're awesome. Black landscaping wall. On the gritty roadway by. By the sea. And it's one more time basis, and also be fired. You, you require to go ahead and give you a permit. Now to go with the acre, you're going to do our unmet acre. Want, but we'll have to bring that into our permits at all. So I'm just a smaller facility. We are going to design, try to get permanent with these things. For both page one, two, ten, three. Well, out without additional purposes. Even though we're not exactly sure how phase three is gonna lay out, uh, but we'll send you clues in that. And provide the count for, uh, to maximize the purpose. That's what's simple. Phase three, right now is potentially a office building, these are optics, um. Allow for display areas. Possibly some built-in, uh, different style areas. Uh. More closely. Um. I think that's about it for now. I did not get a, the letter on this, uh. We're hoping to, again, split the ordinary plant probably. Uh, maybe in September or January, since being a political place all of that, but. Uh, it's, we're testing already, uh, we're in the process of. It was one more intensive design. Just don't come down to the dialogue. What's it, the other is it, what, next product and. That was already questions.
I, I can jump in, is it? Is, is that Brian?
Yeah.
Brian Lee there?
Yeah.
Hold on a sec. Um. The, you didn't get a copy of the letter?
I did not, I did not, I'm reading it.
Yeah.
Even a copy.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Um. Yeah, I, I don't have a whole lot to add. Um. I, I agree with everything Brian said, I guess I. Are you guys getting some feedback?
Something this, something this.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry, guys.
So. It was its own way of.
Yeah. Yeah. Sorry about that. Yeah, they're all. Um. Oh, my. Uh, I'm good. Uh. Uh, the page three, I don't know. All, all. Uh, I was on time. Uh, I'm. Uh, second topic there, uh, it's a clever. That's wrong. Or to know, or how. I. Um, over. Really. Uh, we're need to find what's in concert. Uh, I'm at. How, I don't know. I don't have. Um. Uh, what's the call? Uh, uh, uh. Uh, for. Over the partner, uh, or. I don't know if it is, that's problems that are set back wrong. Trying to pull. That's worth. That's the trouble with mine, uh, okay, for how long? That's mine. Uh, uh, that's the time. Uh. That's what that. I think it's more appropriate to be, to start with, like. If someone knows deep kind of brownware and stuff, sorry.
Especially for page two, right? I agree.
Yeah, I. Uh, one, something. Uh. That's, um. Uh, I can say, uh. 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 Uh, I'm, uh, what's it, uh, I'm, uh, I don't think. Uh. 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 Not quite. Okay, um, definitely. Uh, we, yeah, uh. But, 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 uh, I don't know. Let's see. From. Back on. Uh, I don't know, I'm trying to, I'm hoping. Uh, okay, I'll. Yeah, I was in there. I'm trying to. On down. Uh, it's more common or. Uh, uh, that's probably, uh. I don't know, it's one, one, one. On it. In fact. At the one. Okay. And to the apartment, uh, thousand.
Yeah, we're gonna redo it at the whole place. So we'll include that.
Uh. Um. Yeah. Part of the. Part. Part in part of the. Self. Um. Help of, of. Uh. I, I don't. Uh. What? Good evening, you have anything?
Yeah, I, no good. It's fair, I hear it. That, that's it. Clearly, I say it. Uh. After all, I'm surprised. You do that now. Only work. Uh, hard work. In my village, twenty six year old, which that, basically, I don't know. Possibly community. Uh, that could probably be just. The other typically to make fun of the. There's a big time language, I think he's doing that for us. Such as the bottom, three, three. They had a party, they were trying to. Forty. Yeah, I know. Yeah, it hurts me. Very good. No, we need to be. Hope they hear us. Again, but I think we need to read that. And others, yeah, for yourself. Either way, that was probably what I'm sort of. Thanks, Steve. You can take your up here. One more question. He said, I'm a little more previous, like you would have. That the, he was actually with the drive portion, it's, it's. True, but. Off the top of my head. Now, I would think losing. Um. The area all that you do has these brand ideas going to. Um. I would hope that. Brian has seen, will give you the reason, going, because of those guys, because of tradition, culture, and. And the weather is in. Um, so I don't, that really isn't a big concern because I think. They're gonna try some of them now, where they're using, obviously, to be faster, why is it bigger now? Uh. And they don't see it being many, I don't know. Unless it's something, no, but. Okay. All right, so. They pulled that interesting question, she kept, hopefully you can hear me, Steve.
God, thank you.
Yes. There, thank you. That, it was a, that it was a joke, uh, pretty much saying that we're gonna build a. Okay. Yeah, well, we'll provide drop during that. I. Yeah, it's funny. Yep.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Welcome back here.
Good evening. Well, I need to finalize it. Thank you. All right, now we could print for your life.
All right. Yeah, just using one out of the way, it's both around us.
All right, this four year old, like, the pipe, uh, we're. Here two months ago, I believe. Um. And had some, uh. These days are new, because that's. To repeat that, from the fire marshal, from the planning commission. Uh, we sent, sent met with the authority, we met with borough of. Something to water. Um, we made some revisions for the plan, which. I hope everybody, uh. Likes, and now we're working towards addressing the bit. So, so let me just go over some of the changes in the name of the plan. Um. I guess the first, first, uh, thing we did was widen all the driveways to twenty six feet. So all the driveways coming to the road to the site are now twenty six feet, uh. And aren't compliant with their, uh, sound double, we got, we got zone ready for them, but, um. But also compliant with several things for now, and, uh, for part of our business as well. Uh. Access grades from the public street into the site, driveways. Have now been designed to be five percent. Off the road to first point inch, that's part of my ordinance. And now they're at a maximum of ten percent grade. Uh, previously, we were in look twelve percent. We've got, I don't want to try to make it a ten. And, uh, it caused our walls to get a little higher in the back of the wall, rear. At height point of seventeen feet now. It's about sixteen higher than I was. But, uh, but the driveways access driving now hundred section flying with angry. Another item that was, was changed that provided this was provided a widening along our side. Uh, the existing parkway is only eighteen feet out there. Uh, this roadway, uh, so we are gonna widen on our side, make sure it's a twenty six feet. And we're gonna widen to get for a twenty foot width. Um, along our front, so we're gonna widen four. Uh, the rest of the road still has a few feet, so, um. That's gonna help for some maneuverability, uh, to, to, uh, to be by, up there. Sewer, we have, we have the sewer authority, uh, we are gonna be coming in with sewer. Uh, whole length for, uh, from Main Street Avenue. Through the evening. Uh, across Main Street Pike. To dedicate that name to the sewer authority, uh, because it's a very small sewer lateral connection. That line is gonna be, we need the billboard. At the existing building there, um. You can see on the plan it says evening B, that's the billboard evening. Um, so we are just for the, uh, the last of that, that billboard evening. Uh, with our sewer. Uh, water. Another big topic, uh, we also remember swim in borough, uh, so our team's recognizing, you're already extending the, uh, warming up. Uh, along Main Street Pike to the site, for the fire hydrant, uh, at the end. By fire service up in this area. Uh, that's possible fire, uh, for where, for where it's. Uh, school water management, we have an underground bed. Uh, Mr. McNichols is concerned with how we're discharging that, we need to now provide as a. No more discharge. That's in the, in the right way down to the parkway connecting to an analog fitting inlet. Uh, in the right way will be dedicated to. That's not crossing along the shop. Eventually it's a walk through. The property, but we're gonna go back and. Think that's most of the highlights. Yeah, that's. That's it, we just get a copy of this, this letter here on the. In the meeting earlier, so. There are some waivers that we do have that are requesting. Uh, if they're ready, I can go through those, I don't see a way to add that to your, but. We're ready to go through them. It's all about the plan, figure it out, figure it out before we.
Steve, do you have a comment? Yes, yes. Do you have any comments?
Allow. Uh, I don't like any of this. Uh, ever. Well, labor home page three. Uh, my home class, uh, clean facilities. Practically, uh, self impact, but also. Uh, first cycle. Well, overall, there, there is. Uh. Both my water. Trying to get them to make it, uh, that I, that I go on. Uh, just a little smaller body. I have stuff there, uh, sewer water. Uh, some of my. I definitely go where it's.
That's the sewer too.
Yes.
So I, I, I have to have you think that. I also want people to comment, say that, 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 I don't know.
Yeah, I just got one here tonight, mostly some details, you know, so you'll get a handout permit for the connection. Uh, connect to a planning of the dock before we get a bill. Uh, yeah, we met with them, uh, twice, they went over the plan. And we made a formal submission, at the same time we made this submission, and we have not received any formal response from them yet. Uh, I'll be following, I'll, I'll have to.
One of the questions I have that echoes what in Jess's letter is. Number two under general regarding the sewer easement. You revise not overlapping thirteen easement. Is that the, are, are you trying to overlap either?
It's a small corner of it that's slightly overlapped. It's sort of the next. Yeah, that's true.
I would prefer they just. Move it a little bit to avoid that overlap, I, I know nothing about the billboards even, I don't wanna cause any problem. Not if it's, it should be non-losable.
I, I don't have all the details, uh, the copy of the agreement, but. I'm okay, we're alright if we can just kind of modify it, I typically shift it because the existing manhole. What we're dying into is located right there. Right. Yeah, I, I'm okay with that, I, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna keep it. Uh, even if we just widen it on the other side a little bit, making it.
Yeah, I'm okay, as, as, uh, Kelsey mentioned, I have, I don't know if there's an exclusive easement, and I certainly don't wanna turn to anybody. Framing on anyone else's exclusive easement, so. If we can move it and, and make it.
Usually exclusive?
Yeah, it's a non-exclusive easement, and that little overlap won't cause some unreasonable interference with it, then maybe I don't have a problem with it, but if it's an exclusive easement. Then even that little overlap could cause issue, so.
Yeah, I don't believe it's exclusive, but we'll share things in some opposition. Yep. Yeah, it would be great, move it forward, I don't know, there's really much more planning. Due here, if everybody's okay with the plan and the layout that we've done, that we've worked through some issues and. Try to resolve them, so. I think it's, it's, there's not gonna be much to come back with, it's definitely not different. Maybe some technical things for us and the sewer guys to look at, but I think hopefully. It'll remain the same, so it would be nice to move forward, if we're humble with that.
Are these the, are these the correct waivers though? Um, for the sound of sections, you said. Sections three oh four and three oh five, ones that are like the normal ones that are, as toward. And then, um, they are four oh three and four oh four, is, is that? Which, which numbers are we gonna waiver for?
Right, the first two, the first. I think it's three oh four and three oh five.
Yeah, we can certainly modify the letter.
Uh, a quick, uh, I thought I. One of the first things that I want to say from the standard procedures. You read that, uh, the, uh, spot by the sentence. Uh, that's what I have for. Uh, a lot of the way, uh, by three oh four, three oh five.
Yeah, you're correct, I had the law want to find letters. Somebody did.
So you'll just give us nothing to worry.
Yeah, I can tweak that.
What's the children's use for?
Uh, it's going to be essentially storage for the business across the street, lines and structure. Uh, there's gonna be a small office in the basement, some dories. Drive by access to the basement floor, and then also access that floor, kind of like a. The length launch. Really, they do roofs and siding and windows, and things, so when they order for us out. It's delivered to them, those for, for we should do, or they get after the job, so. Kind of a mission.
And they did start, like, removing some of the area for those.
Yeah, a lot of that was there, and they did start some previously, like, months ago, uh, before we even got to all of this plan. Before you go too far and. And, uh, hit something bigger though. Um, so, yeah, there was some.
I know this used to be like a oil company. Location, but do we have to worry about? Ground fill, like, like, way bigger. I, I guarantee you I, I already will know long ago, James, what you're buying, I'd like to know, we've. But why everything is armed by another, etc., it's me, and these were a phone from. Yeah, and I think that if that makes it good, it's really still.
Brian, the question I'm on my worst. Was there talk at one point about like a retail or showroom or something, and such?
There were, there was some talk about, and. An area for that if. Homeowners wanna come and look at the tight windows, which had, I. I D or something, we'll have areas, then I'll look at it, but it's not really a showroom for that, that would be the, in fact, that much area. Though retail, was, was that windows or anything out there, the whole stuff. We, we did have a label of retail somewhere on a question.
So we're asking for pages five.
Yeah, the board, the board is able, sounds like, uh. You got any comments or?
Actually, I guess, we did, I didn't.
Just step up. The way it's being. Building that acquired, like, even on the part of this business. No, that would actually, that would be. I guarantee it. There's going to be. This might set some out, but if you're. Problem, I can see that, but where the first, you need. You're an angel. You know, even working at work, but they're basically. You know, they, they never really have. And it's more than you can do. Those are much maybe the same, it's something else like that. Moving, hunting, a girl, building her, that building's. Yeah, I, yeah, it seems, it's, you know. I don't. I, I don't feel unusual if we extend the word line a little bit from the height of the front of the building, and maybe make that section twenty six, even if you drive, either plant. If that can give, plenty of paving area for, and somebody get around. I, I think I have a little bit of a, a problem widening. Outside my crunch, outside improvements and I'm something typically required. This is already growing up, but obviously there are a lot of line, there are a lot of. It's already coming up. A physical project, uh, so, so we're curious about that, that story can come down to the end. So just grow some more widening in. For roadway that's. Existing, there were a lot of other residents, and I went through somewhere, I had a hundred percent agree, somehow they got picked out, I felt completely. See residents there now, nobody has any concerns now, what we're doing has been only through this. Providing parking, and I have no problem, there's no parking on it, that's part of the purpose of this, it's like a solid off that though, that's somebody to go. But I have no problem. Um, but I have no problem with, with, I can support them. That's all.
I always heard the exact reason of this now, I don't want to be fired from. Because that actually is not even in relation to the property, the property now still takes the job. The property, no A line, lots of now moving by the job, and uh, I don't, I don't know what our average population requires. How are people required to pass there? I, I do worry, however, there's some kind of parking district along, I'm not sure, but. And that's something that, that is planned, usually they're represented. Um, the planning commission, they're acting, but, but, but then, um, which does make some sense, so we, there's a lot going on that, but, you know.
And we said goodbye, honey, one.
Yeah, in front of the building, I believe I at least, we can, that's twenty six feet, I don't know that all firm, but if that's the case, we'll have to make that twenty six feet there anyway. So. I think there is. And it's similar to that, it's not giving, I'm, I think, can be, can help. Can be evaluated, and then we do, do allow that. That's the, I don't, for, 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 like, this, we're going to be grabbing. I don't think they even have a problem with it, well, thank you. I don't know if that's our fact, but they, his use and everybody else's. It seems a, a lot of them. Well, yeah, people are like, they're, 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 yeah, they're, yeah.
Remember, Lancaster, all, all Lancaster fights, we used to be Lancaster fights, that's why I started generally correct about that. Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe we can, we can take a look at the concerns, and we can not.
That knows their policy. That there is, that's one, one thing, instead of using, like, a bank spot, this is, correct, from our, definitely stand on point, I mean. Oh, there's gonna be parking on both floors of the block, so the handyback station will be like, pop down with. Why didn't you have the draw, so we drive, let's drive, really right from the building. We're not, that's true. Walk through the box. Yeah, I don't think a hundred percent of the building. So, definitely, the, I think the space at the top in the seventh floor access is clear enough. I just come through, man, I think, I think, yeah, so. Yep.
Anyone else have that, please?
That's.
But you. You can, you can, at home and subject to the revision, especially this tomorrow. All right, so let's take one line. You want to probably, you know.
So let's take one line. I mean, I would say we can, um, the, the recommendation would be to grant the waivers included in the October thirtieth, twenty twenty five letter from the B two Z design group. Subject to the revision of the waivers for section four oh three, which should be revised to section three oh four. And section four oh four, which should be revised to section three oh five, subject to the resubmission of that letter, dated four on, October thirty first, twenty five.
That was like, yeah, December second.
Oh, my gosh.
The day that, it's Friday again. So I got the all of them. Okay, can we have, uh, emotions? And they'll make those again.
I'll move them.
And second. All those in chamber? Five. No, please, please, please.
Okay. Appreciate, so uh, for we submit, this is red double seven, hand up. A little better, heard. Now, I don't know, I don't know. All right, I just wanted to make sure I was, anything you have that, uh, on the resume? Yeah, what's a?
Now, of course, volumes, correct, we have, along the other business, uh, first, we have the, the organization, uh. The vacancy in the vice chair position, um, I would suggest that I won't talk so pretty, so he just wanted to hold up there, it's a chance, please, uh, Daddy Brad. I'm worried about the words. Okay, the other, the other, I, that was, uh, full resignation of Carol. Not very happy about, but uh, but this, right. If we have no information, then it's a lot to be, the law, I think. Unfortunately, that's, uh, Jerry, it looks like comments, but before this very well prepared. Next is, uh, considering scheduling, we can, we're in the twenty five six meeting agenda, well, it's, 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 we do that. Or it's not, or we say, you know, we need, uh, we need, we need, so, so, people have, uh.
It can be in first day, that goes, knows what has been done in the past, but that's not, it just can't be the same, right? That's, that's. Let's go. First. I'm.
Yeah, I do too.
You, you can send them right now, if you wish. No, 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 we prefer being notified and make your, um, we're sorry to hear that. We hope you have a great time wherever you're going. No, you're going to the dark side, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm still officially, uh, sorry, but, um, okay.
Uh, the board commissioners is, is, dealing with the next question that no one has uttered. Is that it? The board commissioners would like to deal with appointments on all of the various board committees in January after the new board is appointed. We're, well, we're, people are saying. I understand that, but we have some, a whole minute, and some, they never vacancies now, they have to develop it. I'm just telling you that's how the board commission is going to play that they want to do it. Usually to deal with a lot of things, like this, at the December regularly, because it's a majority of board, which is going to be on the new board, January month, we have a, in June.
Okay, so. Who we. Yeah, Rebecca, January twelfth. Unfortunately, that's, 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 I love it, I love it. I thought, no, I don't think, yeah. I actually, I have the. The person for time, you, you, I, yeah. I don't, she got in front of me. We don't know that, how, she's like.
Was the, the alternative is season leave is open, and then Patty can turn around a bunch of emails, see if we can identify different dates. Are there any days, uh, in either after January fifth, on that leave, the two days to Friday, or the next week, two days to Friday, that are absolutely not going for the eighth to ninth, by November? Right, that would be a twelve plus. I'm like, I don't think. I'm like, I don't have a lot of, I have a lot of. It sounds like it's somewhere, some people said there are a lot of people, yeah, I mean, that, because of that, but I could see the week after, thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen, twelve. All right, so, um, we'll send around the email asking about the thirteenth or fifteenth, thank you for the show.
Hey, just looking down the, uh, I'm gonna, I see that's the, the, finally, work, um, and on the development, maybe.
Yeah, that'll be. So it has to be the fourteenth or the fifteenth. And yeah, speaking of which, um, the economic development steering committee having presented their final report on January, for usual, that would be through. Uh, that was originally scheduled and intended to be presented, sometimes on calendar, you know, five, but it's not gonna be on, uh, the day of, uh. And who is supposed to?
Then, sir, I'm, I'm even not.
Hey, this is the battle of the job, this procedure, you're responsible to have, well, for this, present waiver request, and that you can, of course. For a notification, please, or, or.
I would have to defer to Kelsey, I mean, it's up to the developer, what's your secret, the dollars are on, yes. But the waivers that you're requesting from us are much different than the pairings is the zoning relief that they're requesting from them, or. They're requesting relief from the zoning ordinance, here they're requesting relief from the subdivision, the main development, I think.
Too different.